I'm gonna call this city council work session to order be in Valentine's. February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, three P M. I want to apologize. This is not our fault. This is our regularly scheduled. A second Tuesday. So for those that are here, thank you for being here, for those spouses that are here and not. You know, not being taken out to dinner and things of that nature. Once again, thank you for your sacrifice. This meeting is called to order invocation will be given by council member Gilbert Vasquez and then we'll commence the agenda. You can choose to join us in prayer. You can do so by of your own choice and stand up and join us, Mr. Vasquez.
Please join me in reciting the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. Can everybody here is in the back row? You good? Got a lot of complaints online that, you know, we're not being heard. I don't want performance service presentation working with Performance Services, Inc. City can use energy saving performance contracting finance, energy focus, infrastructure projects, Mr. Chip Wood. How you doing, sir?
Good, yeah. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Again, thank you all for your time, especially on Valentine's Day. My wife probably appreciate them now, so. We'll get into it. I know you guys have a big agenda and I. Very again, thank you for your time. I want to address kind of who we are. What we do and how we do it and show you the vehicles where I think, given my tacit knowledge of of the city. How the our company can help. You know, we brag a little bit. We were established in nineteen ninety-eight. We're this is our twenty-fifth year. There's I'm not going to read every slide, but a couple of things I'd like to point out. Really, the the key one is the second to the last bullet. Fifty-six percent of our business is repeat business. We take a lot of pride in in what we do and how we do it. I'll share in a little bit. When we design and build a project before we present it to you, it's completely baked in. It's there are no change orders.
Can you move the microphone over to?
There you go.
There you go. Sorry.
Is it on?
Yeah. No, that's better.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so we don't allow change orders. We do a really good job on the front end. Engaging with our customers all throughout the process to make sure that we haven't missed any steps. But when again, when we present that project is if it's as stated, we don't allow for change orders. So if we get into whatever the scope is, whether we're doing some lighting at the ball fields, we're doing something with water. You know, I'll share in a little bit. We've already identified there probably is a need for an elevated storage tank on the north end of town. Due to all the extended growth out there, so. If we do that and then we identify, okay, we're going to put up this elevated storage tank on the north end. But we didn't account for the water line distribution. That's on us. We can't come back to you and ask for a change order if it's something that we've already designed. You can only ask for a change order whenever we get into these projects. And so and because of that, and along with our process. We have projects that are in stages or phase eleven and twelve. We do a lot of design build. In Indiana with schools and school districts. We're working on a project here locally with Odessa College. We did a small lighting project in some of the sports facilities. And then we're looking at designing phase two and phase three. I I'm told that, you know, Dr. Williams and Ken Zartner with the college would give us a glowing recommendation. So I'm happy to share that with you today. A little bit about our team. So this is. You know, for some of the city that may remember me, I I used to work for a meter vendor. So I was. One of three salespeople in a state of Texas and we had a couple, you know, the surrounding states, but there's three of us. We had one support guy that had eight states. So the experience, if I wasn't, you know, able to help out with the city, it was it was a bit of a challenge. When I came over to Performance Services, there's five of me here. This is our this is our execution team and all of these people you see are in Texas, the engineering team. And highlighted in red are those that we've identified that are going to help out with this project. So you truly have a team. Of professional, we have professional engineers, we have business development managers, and then the project management team. Our municipal experience and again, this, you know, we've we do a little bit of everything. Controls, lighting, solar, automated valves, remote shut off. Smart metering. And again, I I will also have this. Presentation for, you know, whomever to see it's available. Here are some of our references and this looks interesting because there's a lot more than. I don't know why this is showing up odd. Oh, they're popping in. Oh, look at that.
Your internet is slow right now.
Technology. Okay, so these are some of our recent projects. Again, I mentioned that the first one up top is Odessa College. You'll see that top banner. We do a lot of stuff with school districts. We have a pretty well-rounded team, not only with our engineering and our project management. But our our personal assess, our business development manager. So. I I've spent the better part of last decade doing water, decade before that, doing communications with A T and T. Jenna Shadowitz, one of my partners, she's well-versed in age vacuum controls and solar. Ryan Quigley, someone else that was on the previous page, he's got thirty years of water distribution and wastewater. So I mean, with the three of us and that that's just. The design team, we have the the engineers that you saw and then our ability to execute. And we're pretty proud of these. So again, you know, we've only been in Texas. We've been we're twenty-five years old. We've been in Texas for eight years. One of our projects was the city of Jacksonville. Right before the freeze, we put in some shut off valves throughout the town. As soon as that freeze happened, they were able to use that and shut off parts of town. They estimated their water loss was in the millions within having the system for months. So the payback on it was exceptional. One of the other benefits of working with us, we have a marketing team that advocates for all of our projects. And they applied for both the T M L award and then once we our our project received that award. We also got an award for the top fifty smart cities. Smart cities is a big buzzword over the last few years. We put applied this project. There's an application process. Our marketing team applied for this project. So the the top fifty in the world. So I mean, we're we're pretty proud of these two awards. All right, any questions so far? So I showed you hopefully kind of on a very high level who we are. What we do. This is this is how we do it. We leverage legislation. So this is Texas Chapter Government Code three oh two. This is there to protect all parties. So it and this is just a synopsis, just a quick snapshot of the actual legislation with a few highlights. Most of those highlights are in water because when people think of energy savings, they don't think water equals energy. So that also includes. The accuracy of the meters. The efficiency and whether you're having to go, how you read those meters. Is there any distribution leaks because there's no pressure monitoring or leak detection? And so a lot of those. Energy conservation measures when implemented. Can increase revenue, decrease operating costs. And then that revenue can be extrapolated over a twenty-year period per the legislation to help build. Projects that'll self-fund, meaning self-fund it's there's no budget dollars required. It it doesn't, uh, doing a purchasing through, we're we're procured through tips is one solution. We don't have any product, so we're vendor agnostic. It's truly based on whatever. Oops, we lost that. I can see this. Can y'all see it? Everything else? Okay. So again, here's the legislation. It's copied straight from that. Here's I'm a more visual learner, so we put this together mostly for me. But the first pie on the left is before you would do an energy savings contract, that dark blue is your water and sewer revenue. Everything else is what does it cost to operate? And what are you expending? Whether it's, you know, you have budget every year and then you increase that budget for depreciating product or product that's not working. Once you get into a project, your revenue is going to jump up significantly. All the operating costs go down and then once the project's paid for. That project costs is supplemented by just positive cash flow. And with regards to water. Your your meters in the ground, I'm well-versed with them because I was, you know, the guy who helped with that project. But it's there's moving parts in those meters. And so those those meters were put in, you know, about a decade ago. Well, after time, that revenue or the accuracy drops. Well, as it drops, your consumption stays the same. Whatever you're producing is still going through that meter. You're just not measuring every teaspoon. The the new metering systems are accurate for the life of the meter. They were allowed to go out twenty years. We don't recommend twenty years. We recommend fifteen years. This pie example on the right would be. An example of you paying for it for fifteen years, but you're still going to get the benefit of catching every drop of water that goes to that meter for the life of the meter. Uh, any questions?
Yeah, we have some words. Go ahead and keep going.
Um, so again, and then here's here's the benefit of, you know, that's how is we use the legislation. Why is here are the benefits of working with us using a performance contract? There are no upfront costs. We'll do a preliminary look. We've already done one. I mentioned the the recommended elevated storage tank on the north end of town.
Is that the one on Elondale?
Well, there's not one there. We would recommend, we would recommend adding.
Park spell, okay.
I recommend adding one.
Yeah.
No, I mentioned the no change orders, guaranteed results through the accuracy of the meter. It's it's technology and this is assuming a meter. We were talking about lighting, solar, anything else. We are, if we were to sign a, you know, a contract and the the payment terms are fifteen years. We're involved for all of those fifteen years. I mentioned, we've only been here for eight, but we've been in Indiana and other states for twenty-five. We've got a long history of our our net promoter scores, for those that are familiar with those or. Customer experience scores, or they call them C X scores, are off the charts high. I mean, it's. It looks like monopoly money as you compare it to other industries, not only our competitors, but the likes of Amazon, Apple. Other technology companies, we really excel. A lot of the reason why I left a really good company to come work for a great company. It's, I would I would encourage anyone that wants to know about us, just, you know, pull me aside, ask. It's it's a fantastic place to be. But again, a lot of this stuff. I think no change order sets us apart from maybe our competitors. You're able to defer payments if you use a taxes and police purchase. What that does, it allows you to. Use the benefits that are implemented but not have to pay for it. So that that lift in cash flow without having to make a principal and interest payment. Allows you, in in your y'all's case, millions of dollars to use for something else that might not be considered self-funding. Or or pay for itself, like lighting or inaccurate meters. Solar would offset energy costs, those things. And this is just, this is how we execute. You'll see the prelim preliminary stage on the left. This is probably our most important stage, this and the investment grade audit. Because this is what gives us a feel, because we're we're in a sense dating. We want to make sure because we don't allow for change orders. Is this a good investment of my time, our engineer's time to to take a look at the city? Because during this preliminary stage. I mentioned there's no upfront cost. There's no cost at all during the preliminary stage. We want to make sure that we're going to be able to deliver a project or at least a scope of work that you define what that looks like. And that we're able to execute without any change orders. The investment grade audit, which would be the next stage, would be after we've done the prelim. We have a a meeting to close out the prelim and say, okay. Here's the list of things that we've seen. We'll stack rank them as as we think they're how we see them in importance. That may look very different to the city or the council. So. You guys might decide, okay, well, we want to do one, two, and four. We don't want to do three. And then let's see how we do with those before we look at some of the other stuff. Once we do that, so we take one, two, and four, we get into an investment grade audit. That's done through a letter of intent. It's just a one-page paper. The the council would likely authorize the the city manager to execute it. We can get you a copy of what that looks like. It's truly just our hard cost because during that audit. Y'all could take my word for it. Oh, yeah, we looked at some meters and we did this. We looked at some lighting. But we would bring a third party in to come in and actually physically do the testing. It's it's required. It's not just a, we like to do it because we want to spend this extra money. It's required by the legislation that a third party does this testing. So they'll test, then we'll define, okay, this is what the project looks like. We we present it to you. One of three things happens. We get it right in the prelim. We get into the investment grade. By the way, let's say it's. Seventy thousand dollars because that's what it's going to cost us to bring someone in to do the testing. That seventy thousand is not due. If we get it right, everyone agrees, looks like a good project, that seventy thousand dollars just rolls into the cost of project. The second scenario is we go through here, we get it right. For whatever reason, the the city decides, you know, it's not a good time. We've got. These other things that we need to focus on. And it 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 looks imminent that we're not going to go and do any of this. Then at that time, that seventy thousand will be due. Given consideration for budget, we may push it to the next budget year so you wouldn't have to have a special meeting to add. You know, those unaccounted four dollars in in the budget. The third scenario, and given our our front prelim work, I don't think this is likely, but I'll I'll state it. We get it wrong on the prelim. And we we have a just a false sense of confidence that we can get this a a project here. We get it in the investment grade audit. We do the meter testing. We do light testing. We do the the research on the the energy usage. And we we cannot find a self-funding project. We send it off to a third-party engineer. Because that has to happen to approve our our work and our math. They also say, you know what, you you guys, this is not a self-funding project. At that time, we hand over the audit. It's not a bad audit. It's just it's not making a self-funding project, but you don't have to pay that seventy thousand dollars. So that's the risk we absorb in in doing that. But it's also why we do so much work on the front end. To make sure that we're going to deliver and deliver a good project and deliver an excellent experience. And. That's it. I appreciate y'all's time.
Can we get the lights? Council, do we have any questions?
Always makes me nervous when somebody tells me it's no cost upfront, so let me make sure I understand the finance. You're you're telling me that y'all are going to finance the project. You're going to lease it back to us. Do I understand that correctly?
It's what it sounds like, but it's not. So it's we make no money on the financing. We we work with government capital. We've worked with Capital One. We are, and it's just someone that we use at Capital One. We'll go to him and say, hey, Ken, you go out for bid or look for certain rates for this project. A lot of cities will say, you know, we we'd rather just go and go through our our F A or use our guy at government capital. It makes no difference to us how it's done. It's but the the term of. How you procure it or the recommended or what most people do is a tax-exempt lease purchase. It sounds like you're leasing, but it is by all accounts a purchase.
So what's what's the? Tell me what, I mean, are we are we using certificates obligations, bonds or what? I mean, I'm sort of.
You could, we've seen people use a blend of them. But ideally. We would go and we'd look and find a project that'll pay for itself where you don't have to. Increase your budget or go out for C O. I mean, there's there's a number of different ways for paying for a project.
Give us an example of self self-paying, self-sustaining projects within a government entity.
So. I've done a little bit of homework on you guys. So your water and sewer revenue, we'll just use simple numbers, right? Well, your numbers. Your water and sewer revenue is about seventy million dollars. Right? So if we just did. A meter project. And we said, okay.
A smart meter project.
Smart meter project, right? With the no moving parts and we said, whatever we implemented, we found a three percent lift. Over those meters. Over your existing meters. And so everyone agreed, okay, we're not going to test every meter, but we're going to test. A statistically relevant sample of the meters that are in the ground. And then say, okay, for a city your size, it's going to be probably close to a thousand. But we'll we'll test those meters and then we'll say, okay, will these meters on average come in at, you know. Ninety-five percent. Well, we're not going to take that top percent and a half. Because the A W W A. Line for accuracy is ninety-eight and a half percent to one oh one and a half. So there's a percent and a half on each side of one hundred. We're not going to take that that extra buffer because we want to be very conservative because we want y'all to make your payments. That's not going to be an issue for you guys, given the the growth. But we want to be conservative because we want, we want to execute. We want to excel. We want a second phase. So we want, we're we're always very conservative on that. So again, using that that ninety-five percent. Let's say we just take three percent of that. Well, three percent against seventy million is, I think it's. Two point one million dollars. So you take that two point one million. Over the what the legislation allows us twenty years. So that's forty-something million dollars, forty-two million. So forty-two million dollars. By just, we're not taking into consideration any budget dollars that are normally set aside for annual meter purchases. Or or anything with water that was considered in that scope of work. So you have that forty-two million dollars or the additional maintenance or any O and M savings that. You might get for doing the project. If we're just using that. Water loss or water increase in in accuracy at three percent. We've got forty-two million dollars to build a project. What the beauty of performance contracting is, you could take that forty-two million dollars, even though we're it's flat. We're not, we're not adding any. Inflation every year. We could probably, I mean, what was last year? Eight percent? Zero, if we had no inflation to that number, forty-two million dollars. We could then say, okay, well, let's say the meter project costs. A new A M I smart meter system costs thirty-five million dollars. We still have seven million dollars to use for something else. We would recommend, you know, part of that being the elevated storage tank. Part of it being distribution-wide pressure and leak monitoring. Because some of that stuff might catch what happened last summer. Or and or make it, you know, you'll you might know about that. Right before it happens or a little bit before it happens, but there's there's a lot of good water technology out there. To help you be very reactive instead of, you know, just just finding out when you're getting calls.
Let me ask this question. How old is the smart meters that we have? When when when's that project and what was the cost of that project?
On average, about ten years.
We're at ten years?
Yes.
And it was about twenty eighteen million?
No, fourteen million.
Fourteen million? And so you're you're saying basically fifteen is the expectancy, depending on what the system that we have.
The new meters?
Yeah.
The new meters, well, so battery technology is exponentially better. We're we're finding even the stuff that's been installed. In the last ten years, or actually twenty years ago, we're finding a lot of those batteries are lasting for, you know, seventeen, eighteen, some longer. So we know the battery technology is there and as long as the battery technology is there. There's there's no moving parts in the new meters. So there's no degradation of accuracy loss year over year. We might, we will, in this scenario, we would test these hundred or thousand meters. And we're, let's say, at ninety-five percent. Well, we can't take extra math and say, okay, do we all agree in five years it's going to be ninety-three percent? So let's let's fudge the numbers to account for future water loss. We, I don't know if we could do that, but we don't. We take it as a face value of what it is today and build the project based on that.
Everybody clear on that?
He just answered my, I was going to ask him about the water meters, how they're more accurate, but he just.
Yeah, there's there's no moving parts.
So do we have about a thousand?
Well, it's, I I just threw that out.
No, I know that. I would I would have to say there's, it's got to be more than that.
No, y'all have like forty-something thousand meters.
Well, we're talking about not just households, you know, commercial.
And large meters. I think. What do we have? Maybe? An inch and a half, maybe four thousand or so, inch and a half or bigger.
Well, you know, one of the things that I that I, I I remember when this thing was rolled out. The controversy that the city was going to be able to go around and have staff running around with. I I think handheld mechanisms, the Bluetooth availability to be able to hack into your house household computer. And so then the meter started coming in, then you started seeing more accuracy as far as, you know. Measuring the usage out there because I think the system was still manual up to that point, ten years ago. But over the course of that ten years, we've seen breakage and things of that nature. So. You know, the thing is, is that are we replacing them with the smart meter as they're being broken? I've witnessed in some of the people I know that have a metal one. So we're doing a hybrid now. After ten years, we're doing both smart meter and doing the visual. So we went from a a seven-member staff down to a four, now we're back to seven. And so the thing is, is that do we need, we have a point that we need to make an assessment because that department. Needs to be money generating for the city.
Yeah.
You know, we were tasked to go out there and find money. And so the thing is, is that we need to, we 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 put in place for a reason ten years ago. And the council and and the staff sat there and says, hey, look, we need to, we're leaving money out there. We're providing the services. We got leakage. We need those indications. We'd be able to have to seal it. But we have to be accurately be able to charge for what we're delivering. We've done that. But the thing is that we do our due diligence in order to keep up with the system as it ages. And do, you know, and and do we want to be proactive on this, you know? I don't, you know, the thing is, this sounds great. You're right. You know, you do take comprehensions like, there's no such thing as free. But we do need an assessment of our system because this is a. A department and what we need to gen- generate revenue, but we need to do it accurately. Both fair for the for the consumer as it is the city. Does that make sense?
Perfect sense. Let me be clear. It's not necessarily a recommendation at this point.
Correct.
So we would still need to test and vet it out. But given that I I know the age of the large meters are the oldest ones. Some of those are massive revenue generators. It it could be, you know, if we go and we get in, if we're fortunate enough to earn your trust to get into. The the prelim and and do the investment grade and have some people come test. Again, I, we're talking a lot about waters, which I love, because it's what I'm familiar with. But, you know, the, the army of people, we're also gonna be looking at, you know, uh, lighting at, uh, facilities. Um, how are the controls? Um, it, and then I mentioned, uh, uh, Mr. Quigley, he's got, he's new to us, but he's got thirty years' experience in, in water distribution and wastewater. Um, if there, there can be significant improvements with just, um, you know, changing out pumps, um, what are, what do some of the lift stations look like? Um, and so there, there are a lot of different facets and variables that are considered energy conservation measures. And so we, we are gonna look at all of them. Um, I'm just acutely aware of, in particular, the, the, the meters themselves, because I remember when they were put in, the large ones were done first. All of those are out of their warranty. Um, and so you can change out the technology, you know, so if some of the technology's not working, and you can replace it with something current, that's great. You got a brand new, uh, uh, battery communicating somehow to either a fixed base network or cellular, however it's working, that part is working great. But this meter that's in the ground has been there for, in some cases, ten or eleven years now. It might be at eighty percent accurate. So all of your reads are going fine, but you're losing twenty percent of the revenue. That's what we wanna investigate while we look at all this other stuff. And then we come back to you with, here's the list of what we see, and then y'all decide. I mean, it's, you, we're, we're the, we're the hammer. Y'all, y'all use us. We're, you know, it's, liken it to, we're a general contractor for a custom home. So if it's a track home, you're, you're not gonna really get to pick, you know, what, where the lumber's coming from, or who's doing what, or what some of the, the manufacturers for, uh, some of the hardware or in the house, whether it's appliances or otherwise. But for a custom home, we're your general contractor that you get to pick. Okay, I want the mowing faucets in here, but I want a Kohler setup in my shower. And this, so you, you guys drive us in which direction you wanna go.
So right now, all of our new construction, we have a lot of it going on. What kind of, does anybody know what kind of, is it wrong? You know what kind of meters are, are we requiring certain kinds of meters?
Yes, sir. So currently, they're putting in manual reads, so there's not any electronics. Sporadically, we're getting some in, but, uh, most of them are a manual read.
So this looks like, this, this looks like to me that in, in the long game, that those would be the standard instead of the exception. And it looks like we'd have to have some kind of an ordinance or something to, that it doesn't, I guess, the cost difference was gonna be, is our cost, not the, not anybody else, that we, it goes on the cost of the home?
There's, there's a cost difference between a, a, a static no moving parts meter, their ultrasonic or mag or, or the technologies, or a mechanical meter, which are the ones that you guys currently have. Um, I, I will state that if the city is just invested in mechanical meters in a certain area, like the new build areas, we wouldn't just recommend, okay, just pull those out. We, we would retrofit, especially on the large meters, because you have vault work and other things. That meter's gonna be good for a while. You don't have to just yank it, because you want something else. Um, a lot of the meter vendors, depending on what your next system looks like, almost all of them have technology that'll fit your current meter. And so it's, it's never, we, we never recommend, uh, I, I'm glad you, you asked this question. We never recommend, especially these days, replacement of talent. That is, that is not one of ways that we look to save money is by getting rid of personnel that do things, because it's just hard for cities to find good people to do the job. Nothing else, almost all of them are getting promotions. Um, uh, but secondly, we, we don't recommend wasting, having stranded assets that you've just recently invested in. It's, it's just bad business.
Okay, so council discussion, do we want to move forward? Have, uh, city manager vet this, uh, process more, if it's, it's necessary? Uh, we need some discussion on this.
Um, I know, have a question on the, uh, go back to the water project and the meters. One of the reasons that ours are breaking and it being placed with the original manual meters is because they have the plastic lid, so we can get an accurate reading on the, uh, I guess, on, on the electrical meter. Would Jaws have the, the metal lids still, or would they still have the plastic lid, or?
It depends on the, the new technology you pick. There's, there are some that they don't, that some meter manufacturers, A M I systems, advanced metering infrastructure, they don't care what the lid material is. Um, some of them, like your current one, require, uh, a polymer lid. And they, they have traffic rated polymer lids, um, they are expensive. Um, but we take, if, if we're doing that project, we take all of that into account. So if you picked the same vendor, we would then have to go walk and determine how many metal lids are we gonna have to replace? Because, you know, back to the, the no change orders, if that's the scenario and we miss an entire section of town that has metal lids, and we didn't account for that in our project scope, we still have to pay for that, because that's, that's something we absorb. So I don't, did, I, I promise I didn't ask him to ask that question.
So for, for our developers and, and those people, uh, this wouldn't im- impact their developments for them at all, except for doing, for us putting in what we wanna put in.
Correct.
In a, in a subdivision.
Yeah, and a lot of it's availability. I mean, um, I, I live in, um, San Antonio. Saws is one of the biggest water utilities in town. Um, there are a handful of meter vendors that I would green light you guys on. Yep, go for it, and I could give you the pros and cons for all of them. Um, there are a couple that, you know, I would step away, take my bag, and wish you guys good luck, and a lot of it. Um, and Saws has had to buy some of those, because there's no availability. And they've got houses that are up, people need to move in, but they need water. And so if you're in a jam, that, that's what happens. We wouldn't start a project that we were doing if we were gonna come in and do it. We wouldn't start a project until we had some guarantee from the manufacturer. Now, anything can happen, but, you know, we're gonna have feet on the ground. We have other assets and things that we need to worry about. And then we would also schedule accordingly to this new build area. This is a high priority, so it's, um, again, you guys, to include all departments, you know, if we're talking meters, so it's either, um, C and B or, or, uh, public work, whoever's, whoever has that decision, gonna say, hey, we wanna do this route first because of X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
Fine, we're gonna do that.
We know that water carol northeast is coming. It's been coming, I've talked to Tom about it several times. And what is the new, uh, above ground storage cost, thirty mi- thirty million?
Depends on the size. Yeah, they're, they're not cheap.
It depends on the size, and I know that, that up in Parksville, I know Larry Bell's expecting one up there in that part of town, so, because they're growing so fast and they're starting to build again up there.
Yeah.
So, you know, the question is, how do we pay for it? Do we pay for it in float bonds, or have a bond issue, or do C Os? It looks like if we can pay for it out of our cash flow, that might be a, a great way to do it, leverage your own capital. But that's just, that's just my thought.
Well, that, that's something we would look at, right? So we, we've identified that as a need, but there's no revenue coming from better pressure in that section of town, right? So that, that's hard for a, a performance contractor to come and justify. But because we know water, and we've got experts, subject matter experts that say, hey, there's a lot of growth out here, and we don't see anything above ground to give this town pressure. So that's something that needs to be addressed. Um, there are a few different ways to look at it, and we would present those options. And it may be, you know, you either need to go issue C Os, or, or however that is, we would give you some of that guidance, um, but we, we would be completely transparent with the entire process.
How long would the process take?
Uh, the prelim, um, I, I, we're kind of in the prelim, right? Because we, we've got, we've had some boots on the ground in doing the college works. We've had engineers kind of looking around. Um, I, I've got the tacit knowledge of the, the meters. When we get into an investment grade, uh, we say sixty to ninety days, um, to really dive in. Um, and, and that's largely dependent on, um, because some of that is gonna be not only getting people in town to, to, um, assess lighting, uh, talk to the different departments about solar, but it is about the coordination with the different departments that we need to talk to, you know, if we're gathering the data in a timely manner. Um, ninety days is usually, um, at the long of it, but, um-
Let's go ahead, let's go ahead and wrap this up. Uh, I just wanna be able to see good con- uh, consensus on the council. We wanted to continue to get court and get dinner at, uh, get, get dinner out of this at least. And so, um, you know, just wanna, Councilman Haney, for now?
My thoughts are, you should do the old side of town first, if you're gonna do something, because that's, the new meters are going in already up there, so they're gonna be accurate on the other side of town. So those meters are already accurate, so I would do the, the older side of town first to get the right readings, because that's been here forever. So I would be looking at that first, before I would do the new sides.
Yeah, it's great feedback.
What do you guys think?
Can you move forward, Tom?
Move forward.
Want some more information?
Yeah, we add, that's where, guys, we're looking for more information and, uh, go ahead and start the coordination, so we'll press that to you and then, and on Tom. So, um, so go forward.
What, what kind of time are we talking about? And for, for a preliminary review?
Um-
Timing?
Ninety days, a little more or less?
No, I, for preliminary review, we could probably be back in forty-five days to give you our assessment.
Okay.
I mean, if, um, I, I didn't realize Tom was here, but, um, yeah, it's, we could be, we'll, we'll work at y'all's speed. Um, but to, to do it right, I think if we came back at minimum in a month, maybe in forty-five days, um, to, to get back in front of you and say, or at least we could do another workshop. We could do it here, um, but y'all have a massive agenda, and I apologize for taking a lot of y'all's time, but, um-
It's not that, you're taking time from them, so they're, they're giving you, they're giving you looks.
Yeah, well, I'm glad I, not my wife, and I don't have eyes behind my head, so, um-
I just, I just think it's a great way, Mayor loves leveraging our revenue, so I think-
Oh, yeah? I think we have to look at it.
Okay.
We have to look at it.
All right.
Okay, thank you for that presentation, and we'll continue with, uh, more coordinating, and we'll, uh, coordinate it through city manager. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We're gonna go to item two, presentation of Floyd Gwynne Park renovation project update. Uh, Mr. Patton?
You have two minutes.
You have two minutes.
Two minutes? Cool. I better, it'd be like an infomercial on this one. You're gonna get that? Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. It's great to have Valentine's Day and win. Causes me to wink and almost get slapped at the same time when you say happy Valentine's Day to somebody. I'm like, Floyd Gwynne Park, um, we are ninety-eight percent finished with Floyd Gwynne Park. Few delays on materials and, and delivery of materials, few days of weather. Put us back a couple of days on finishing everything up, but we're, we are today is an exciting place to be, because we will have everything in place, ready to go for baseball that's starting up this coming spring, and I'm real excited about that. Uh, we've been meeting with Floyd Gwynne and, and Danielle Hensley with the Odessa Youth Baseball Association in coordinating what is gonna be installed in their equipment room and as well as their concession stand. Uh, the courts, they are all open, ready to go. All the lighting finished, in place and working. We have, um, the pickleball courts have been scrapped, ready to go. Mayor, you ready for that?
I have no idea what, they had to tell, I had to ask what pickleball is, I had no idea what that is.
Have to get you lined up. We gotta, we've got, we're gonna have some lessons out there.
My knees are already hurting.
And, uh, the parking lots are finished. We had about three hundred and fifty spaces that were out at, um, Floyd Gwynne before we had this project. We're over four hundred and fifty, about four hundred and fifty-two or so spaces, where we have increased the passive vehicles to park there. Um, the walking trails, playground, picnic pavilions, all the electrical is in place. The only remaining thing is the southeast corner, near Tenth and West County Road. We've got some ditches that need to be filled. We've got, uh, about probably a hundred foot by a hundred foot area of irrigation that still needs to be installed. We had a back order on our controller that goes on the water well, got that in the day before yesterday. We're pressuring up the system now, and it's meeting all the pressures. Uh, in addition to that, I was real, um, happy with Onyx Contractors. They're gonna give me a five-year extended warranty on the baseball complex irrigation system. And that, that's nice of them to do that. We've had some problems out there in the past, got all that taken care of, and they offered, you know, as well as I demanded, uh, an extension on that warranty, so that's, that's gonna be in place.
Is that labor and war- labor and, uh, material, or just, the warranty five-year labor and, and labor and material?
As well as if they don't answer within twenty-four hours, and I have to go do it with our crews, we're gonna charge them. That's gonna be part of the, and Kelly Cook will be working with Dan and myself, uh, we'll get that warranty in place before we sign off on accepting that project. Um, the couple of add-ons that we had at the last, and this is, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say house cleaning, but more utility information. There's a service road that we're gonna put from the east parking lot that goes up to the service door of the gym. That was not included in the original project. We need to have a service door, uh, access, so that we can bring our equipment in, that big rolling door on the east side. So that's gonna be going in as a change order. Um, we have a small plaza that's gonna be near the intersection of Tenth between the pal gym, as well as the intersection. That will accommodate a sidewalk that goes from the front door to the other front door. And then the round circle is gonna be a square, and that's where the public art piece will be installed, in that area. And we've got funding for that. Even with those change orders, we're still around sixty-eight to seventy-two thousand dollars under budget. I've gotta add, um, you can look at our list of change orders. It's kinda scary, because the way we handled this project, and the way we bid this project, we did bid alternates, and we did sections of it, like I mentioned when we first started the project. We did this by trades, so I broke out different portions of the project. We had all the courts, that was a project. We had the concession stand as a project, and we had competitive bids on those sections of the projects. And that's what, there's, that's why there's all these change orders, and that's also why we're over a hundred thousand, well, hopefully, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars under budget.
All right. Council, any questions?
From start to finish, how, what's the distance of the walking trail?
We're gonna be, um, about twenty feet short of a mile. So if you take bigger steps, it'll be a mile.
What about the, uh, Steve, one last question. What about the swimming pool? Were, were there any changes made to the pool at all?
We have a new fence.
Okay.
That, that's all we could afford, and, and it helped out a lot. We actually expanded the turf area inside, and I put all new turf in there. We went additional twenty feet to the west, so that there was a bigger lounge area. And if you don't wanna be on the deck, you can be on the turf, and, um, we can also have some volleyball games in that area to open it up a little bit more. And made it real nice.
You gonna do a active tree replacement? How many trees we lose out there?
Oh, oh, good. Um, one hundred and twenty-two trees is what we either lost through, um, the drought or the freeze. We had trees out there where the bark exploded from the freeze that we had. We're lining everything up in our tree farm right now, uh, and I think you'll see a lot of activity starting next week. We're trying to get all of our, uh, Starlight Village displays down, and there'll be trees going in everywhere out there. And that's gonna be our biggest concentration this year, is to get those trees replaced.
Okay. Council, any other questions?
I was gonna ask, Steve, did you say a long time, is this a hundred percent city water? Or did you say you had some working on wells to supplement?
This particular forty-five acre site, this is all well watered. And we're, and we're funded to add an additional well. We need to have three wells to charge up that main line, because the entire main line will stay charged the whole time. So adding that third well, um, this is a real finicky site. Uh, and, and surprisingly, Sherwood is a real finicky site. We're gonna be adding a water well over there, too. That being in Monahan's Draw. And, and the way the draw works, we're finding water on the upper end, over at Sherwood. It's weird, but we're gonna add those wells, and that'll keep our main line pressured up. Now, the soccerplex to the immediate north, that is subsidized with potable water. We can't find, uh, a vein of water to supply as much water as we need on that, that particular site. So it's water well and potable water on that particular site. And Lawndale is the same. Those are only two parks out of the, our thirty-four parks that have, um, support of, of the so, the system itself, the water system. Everything else is on water well.
Appreciate it.
Any further questions? Thank you, Steve.
Great, thank y'all.
We're gonna move on to item three, animal control update. Chief Gurkey? We're gonna need you to stay for the chickens soon.
I've got my chicken expert.
Then, then that's, delegate, there you go, delegate. That was quick.
Good afternoon. In, in reference to the, the new animal shelter, it is very near completion. We did a, the punch list on the building last week. It supposedly should be complete by Friday, or early next week. There's, we have, there's already been a application.
For the veterinary?
Well, for the, the, the temporary certificate of occupancy. So we're, so on the tenth, there was the architect worked, walked through and the punch list and then the temporary certificate of occupancy. So the twenty-seventh to the twenty-fourth, we're, we're hopefully will be issued the substantial completion. And, and on the twenty-third, we have the state vet inspection schedule. So it is very, very near completion and we're very close to being able to, to open that. When you look at the site, it's still lacking some landscaping that will go in. And also the old building that is to the west of that, as soon as we move the animals, that gets destroyed and becomes just a vacant area.
What about, what about the process on the vet?
All right, so we had one person that was interested, she withdrew. We have recruited from every, every veterinary school, I believe, in about a ten-state area. So that's where we're at, we've, we've had no other applications.
But it's an ongoing process?
It's an ongoing process. What we, what happened with that, when we created that position, we took monies from our spade neuter, neuter accounts. So we didn't ask for additional monies to create the vet position. There was no additional funds added to the budget for that position. It was just monies that we moved around, so we then moved those monies back around to pay for spade neuter and that sort of thing at this point.
Okay, if we don't fill that position, you know who's gonna come calling?
Absolutely, know who's gonna come calling.
Okay. Council, any questions?
You gotta fill that position.
Oh, I, I, I absolutely agree. We, the candidate we had is, is a lady that does, is a vet that does contract spade neuters for us on a weekly basis or bi-weekly basis and she expressed interest and then decided to, she was no longer interested.
Was it a money issue?
It was not a money issue.
Okay.
Probably a location issue.
Think we could find the money if we had to.
Council, any other questions? Trust me, we want to urge Chief to fill that position. Okay, we're gonna move on to item four. There's also a, an addendum on that was put in your packet, Chief?
Yes, this is just the request to apply for and accept grants, the HYDA grant, which is a high intensity drug trafficking area grant. We, we apply for this every year in our awarded funds. This year we're awarded funds in the, in the sum of eight hundred, excuse me, eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Five, fifty-five hundred dollars of that goes, can be used for overtime and the other three thousand, three hundred for fringe. Basically, that's the leasing a car, that, that sort of thing. HYDA is, is, is run by DEA, this is for narcotics operations, that sort of thing. As you can imagine, there is a great deal of overtime involved in narcotic operations. Because generally speaking, narcotic dealers do not work eight to five.
Really?
And, and they are not very punctual when you set up a meeting.
I understand. Eighteen hundred isn't much, but we're taking whatever we can.
We'll take what we can get, yes, sir.
I know, I know everybody's saying, well, it's only eighteen hundred, hey, but you know what? Money we didn't have.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Council, any questions? Any comments? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item five, discuss the award of a contract for twenty-twenty-three pavement rejuvenation. Arvin, he's gonna get us through quick on these two next items.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. We have two items for this year's street maintenance program and the first one is pavement rejuvenation. And the Public Works Street Division is planning to use pavement restoration technique in lieu of seal code for a portion of the preventive maintenance program. This product is approximately half the cost of seal code per square yard and offers a good service life. It is designed to be applied to low-volume streets and our intent is to use it on many of the streets that have not been seal coated and, or have not been sealed in several years. And this year pavement rejuvenation project consists of approximately five hundred fifteen thousand square yards of asphalt surface treatment on city streets and it is approximately twenty-one miles. The contract provides a turnkey project and the pavement restoration in, from Burnet, Texas, is the sole applicator of reclaimed material in, in the state of Texas. The total amount of contract is four hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents and the funds are available in the Street Division Maintenance of Infrastructure account. And I'll be happy to answer to your questions.
Arvin, have you already got a list of which streets you're going to address?
Yes, it is on the map, I think it is attached to.
Council, any questions?
I, I do have one. The, the fraction seal, we use that in Odessa before.
Yes, that's the second one actually.
Councilman, can you use your microphone?
Yes.
That way we have recording.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I was watching a mayor in another city talking about fraction seal and he was so impressed with it. I was wondering if he could just expand a little bit on that technology?
That is actually the second item, I mean, yeah, we will talk about it. The friction seal is, is gillsanite, it's a unique resinous material and it is a thin layer of asphalt with the friction material on top of it. It is thinner than a seal coat, so it will not really alter the drainage on the streets. And, and we applied this product before in twenty-twenty in the Rat Leaf Ridge Ranch area. And we have checked it recently to see how it works and it looks good, I mean, it works, it performs well.
It takes a whole different truck to allocate that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it is a unique truck for that application.
Well, anybody interested, we do have a map here of the seal coat project. It looks like an ink block on our, on our end, but I would encourage you to get one in case, make sure that you want a lobby to have your road included before we start going out there and start sealing. Because I've had some calls. Is there any other questions?
So this friction seal, it, it looks like sand almost, right?
It is not, it is actually like eight of an inch, the size of the, the aggregate on top of it, it is not a sand.
I just think I've seen you do it in the past, it just seems like it looked like it's kind of a brownish color, I just didn't know what it was.
Bigger than, no, it's not sand.
Okay, I just had no clue.
Any other questions on this item?
Do we upgrade insurance for windshield?
No, we don't do that anymore. We don't do that. We're gonna go to item six, discuss award of a contract for twenty-twenty-three friction seal, all right? Go ahead, sir.
The Public Works Street Division is planning to use friction seal technique for a portion of the preventive maintenance program. And this product is gillsanite asphalt sealer with friction fine aggregate for asphalt surface maintenance and extends the life of payments for a number of years. It is designed to be applied for two residential streets. And this year friction, friction seal project consists of approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand square yards of asphalt surface treatment on the city streets and it is approximately seven miles. The contract provides a turnkey project and American Road Maintenance is the exclusive roadway applicator of friction seal material in state of Texas. And the total amount of contract is six hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents and the funds are available in Street Division Maintenance of Infrastructure account.
Council, any questions? Going once, going twice? Arvin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item seven, discuss the purchase of twenty-five set of bunker gear for OFR firefighters using the Lifeline account of seventy-six thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. How you doing, sir? Cody Ritchie.
Good afternoon, Mayor Oven, attending councilmen and women and city manager, Colonel. My name is Cody Ritchie, I'm Assistant Fire Chief of Odessa Fire Rescue. I'm presenting a request today for actually twenty sets of bunkers at a price of sixty-four thousand dollars. So bunkers are PPE that we wear. This money does come out of Odessa Fire Rescue's Lifeline account, which is earmarked each year for the purchase of a set amount of bunker gear. During the recent transition of the command staff within Odessa Fire Rescue, this agenda item was entered for twenty-five sets of bunkers with an incorrect price of seventy-six thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. This was corrected yesterday, all the information has been changed and is accurate for the upcoming council session on the twenty-eighth.
Do we have, do we have the corrected price?
Yes, sir, sixty-four thousand dollars for twenty sets.
Same, twenty-five, same company and everything, right?
Yes, sir.
Council, do we have any discussion?
You saved money.
Yeah, we saved money, but we also got left five lists, sets of bunkers.
The thing is they're saving money and making direction for critical things that they need.
Yes, and, and that is, so we, we do have a very aggressive PPE replacement policy just to keep our firefighters safe. You know, with the addition of the next.
You want, what is that?
With, with the addition of our new fire station, that's also gonna add some cost to it yearly and the prices every year, of course, on all of our gears going up, so. But that's where we're at right now.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Thank you very much. All right, we saved some money. Item eight, discuss and consider eliminating portions of Don Avenue, Sixty-first Street as presented in the master, master thoroughfare plan Desert Ridge subdivision. Also, there's a consideration of eliminating segments of Don Avenue as represented in the twenty-twenty transportation master plan. Elimination of the connection of Sixty-first and Desert Ridge subdivision and to the Sunset Heights neighborhood in the west and represented by the twenty-two transportation plan. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members. I think what I wanted to do was first ask, does anybody wanna see it in a paper format?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, because I'm getting it really slow and everything's blurry.
We're getting a lot of, it's not our eyes.
A lot of glare too, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Appreciate you, sir.
So I thought the first thing to do was to just show you what was approved back in two thousand and twenty by resolution and that's the, that's the first printout that you have in front of you and it's also what's up on the screen for everybody else. And I might just kinda go in a little bit and show you what was, what was proposed back in two thousand and twenty. And as you can see, in the area of that Desert Ridge, there was a proposed arterial road to go through that particular area or a minor arterial road. To date, as you know, Don north of Yukon is that two-lane road, it has a little curve in it. And then to the south of Yukon, it is not completed, obviously. Right now, it's built up, up to, I don't know, maybe five or six streets shy of Sixty-first Street. Would you say that's accurate roughly? So I think that it was just, one, again, important to show you that this was approved back in two thousand and twenty by resolution. If you'll go to the second page, you'll see what was a scenario that we kinda looked at. And yes, you'll kinda see what is. You can see an RPZ up there in the top left. Okay, so what is that RPZ? That's a runway protection zone. And that was made, we were made aware of that probably two months ago. And the idea was perhaps we wouldn't be able to build Don through that RPZ. Those are things that are gonna be discussed at another meeting with some other folks. That being said, I wanted to bring this to your attention, whether the RPZ is there or not. So yes, that was the thing that was kind of the catalyst for this discussion. But in my mind, I wanted to get feedback from the council on whether or not it's a good idea to divide a neighborhood with this arterial road, to divide a, a, a north-south road that's five lanes from the top all the way up to, let's say, eighty-seventh, coming down to Yukon. Then through this neighborhood, bisecting this neighborhood, then going to point south of Fifty-second Street. And then, and eventually that five-lane road, obviously when it hits Fifty-second becomes two-lane road. And then it's a two-lane road all the way down in front of Ireland Elementary, all the way down to Permian and then it becomes Neighbor's Lane down the road. So you're talking about it all funnels down into this two-lane road. And in addition to that, Sixty-first Street is scheduled in this thoroughfare plan to bisect again this neighborhood. So I just wanted to bring this up and just something to consider. And that is, are we better off maybe thinking about our neighborhoods and maybe in a different light? Not thinking about them as places in which traffic flows through, but rather places that traffic flows to, if that makes sense. So am I not mind, the best neighborhoods are those that your destination is the neighborhood, not through the neighborhood. So in my opinion, by, by bisecting this neighborhood and other neighborhoods, not just this one, but I think that's something to think about as we move forward through a planning lens. Do we think that perhaps that might be something to think about? Just reducing the amount of traffic in our neighborhoods, decreasing the speed in our neighborhoods. And I think by doing that, we increase walkability, we increase connectivity and then we increase really just the overall quality of life of our neighborhoods. I'm not saying that there isn't a place for thoroughfares, there really is. I just wonder if this particular neighborhood and honestly, even Don to the north, is one that we could also look at as well. And that's just what I wanted the conversation to be. There are certainly pros and cons to all sides of this. We have staff who could answer questions and give opinions. I'm certain you all have opinions and surely maybe even the community at large might have some opinions on this. But again, I think, like I said, for me, it's all about walkability, safety, slowing it down in the neighborhoods and building a sense of community and quality of life.
Aaron, when you said there's currently five lanes right now, help me understand, I don't.
So if, you can't really see it right here, but let me, if you don't mind, I'll maybe pull it up on Google Earth so you can see. So they may not actually have five lanes, it may just be built for five lanes, is that correct?
I was thinking it was only three lanes.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's built for five lanes though, isn't that correct, Don is? Yes, sir. So. It's not really showing it right here, but this little stretch right here that my cursor is on and then actually it goes down to Fifty-second, that's built for five lane or it's, the width is for five lanes. I don't, is it, is it currently striped for five lanes, Tom? The, the Don, I don't believe it's striped for five lanes, but it is. But its width can. Yeah, so it's, it can handle that. And I think it's kinda interesting, Mr. Lee behind me just said a parking lane. I, I think sometimes we see that in municipalities all across the country, right? We see streets sometimes that are overbuilt and all of a sudden we, we create these streets that are, then all of a sudden have parking lanes and things like that and stuff. Now, again, there are, like I said, pros and cons to this. If you were to have the entrance just on the, well, so let's say you have.
You're asking for two entrances, one on the south and one off of east on Grandview.
Yes, sir, so you would have your main entrance and through. Yes, sir. So you would have your main entrance and through the sixty-first street, and this would be about the, this limit, right, see where my cursor is right here? That would be about the limit of the neighborhood. To the north of it is a drill site, and then there would be, um, retail along Utah, uh, around, I'm sorry, along Yukon and then down, uh, Grandview on this side. So the, this would be about the extent of the neighborhood, right here where my cursor is, and then there would be sixty-first Street right here. This would enter into the, to the neighborhood, and I'm, I'm proposing that perhaps it stop right about here, or some configuration of it, that it not connect into this neighborhood.
Why is that?
Uh, I, because, and I like the idea, and again, this is just an opinion, I like the idea of neighborhood, uh, neighborhoods being cohesive units, if that makes sense.
Well, this concept is like in San Antonio and some of these other urban areas, uh, what they've done is they've done this concept. And long-term, uh, planning, and their urban planning, and long-range planning, they figured out that was the worst thing they could do because they constantly are throwing. It's a destinat- destination to the neighborhood, right? Now, this is built where you can go through the neighborhood.
Right.
Now, some, you're right, some of these, some of these roads, especially in the older parts, do become, uh, drag, drag strips. But the thing is, is that it'll live, it's gonna alleviate the overflow into the main, into the main streets. San Antonio, and I, and I'll use that example, 'cause I lived there for thirteen years, has that concept that you're talking about. And so you can't cut through, so there are destinations too, but all that neighborhood piles in into one major artery that becomes congested. Especially during, uh, you know, peak times, going to work, school, uh, in the morning, and then in the, uh, in the afternoon now. That won't be the issue today, but could it become the issue later down the line? So, yeah, you, I think you're right that about, uh, would it be Dawn to Yukon? Well, we know what's driving that. That has nothing to do about destination, walkability or anything. We know it has to do with the, uh, the acreage of the, uh, of the county. But aside from your personal preference of not connecting to the west, do we have any other hard evidence why we wouldn't wanna do that?
Uh, ad valorem taxes contributing to the wear and tear of sixty-first Street? That's a, that's a reason.
Well...
Perhaps.
What, what's contributing to not having enough ad valorem is we're having a misunderstanding of the impact fees, and two, three-eighties that are abundant. So, other than that, what other, uh, reason?
Safety, traffic flow through the neighborhoods.
Okay, so that's it right there. Personal opinion, ad valorem, and, uh, safety issues.
Safety issues.
Okay, that'd be a, that'd be a three-lane road or a five?
Which, I'm sorry, sir?
That'd be a three-lane road or a five?
Right now, it's scheduled to be a five-lane road coming down from Dawn, and this is scheduled to be, uh, i- if you were to match up the, the plan, it would be a five-lane ra- road all the way across. Wouldn't it sixty-first Street?
Is that what exists right now, is a five-lane to the west?
What would sixty-first be?
Sixty-first is not a five-lane road.
No, it's straight.
Okay, so why, why are we requiring, uh, the developer to do a five-lane right now?
Well, that's, that's part of this discussion, too, is are we overbuilding roads?
Well, that's the question. That's why I'm asking. Are we overbuilding it?
I don't, and, and, you know, I can't answer that question completely, Tom, but...
So Larry, can you answer that for us? Can, can you come up here to the, that way we can, I'm sorry, but that way we can have it recorded. It won't pick up your voice that far, and we're getting a lot of complaints from our, our virtual world.
He's right, uh, he's right about sixty-first Street. Let me just say, we're building a four- or five-lane extension of sixty-first Street to the end of the city limits. That road will end in somebody's backyard as it's built today.
That will be to the west?
Yeah, to the west.
Okay.
It's not gonna go anywhere. It's an, it's a, it's running into somebody's backyard.
So what do you suggest there? A dogleg, uh...
There's no place to dogleg.
Nothing.
There's houses all along there. You're building a dead-end street.
So why was, was that your recommendation to put that in there?
No.
How did we come, how did we come to, to this?
'Cause it's required under the master plan.
That was done...
And that was the one, the twenty-twenty?
Twenty-nineteen or twenty-twenty.
Yeah, there was a meeting out at Floyd Gwin Park about all, with the developers, and this road was a requirement.
What was it gonna serve? What was the purpose? If it's going to a backyard, what, what was the purpose of why it was required to put into the master plan?
'Cause the city required me to.
And we required it to be a five-lane road also?
Yeah.
And this hap- Kurt, Mr. Kurt, do you have one adding to that?
I just, you know, unless you get, you do eminent domain, or you buy these houses out into the county, which you, to the west, it's a dead-end.
So is that county right there?
That's county line right there.
Okay. That's the problem.
That is a major problem.
Why did they require it to go into county?
This makes no sense.
Okay. Mr. Kurt, did you have something to add? Hey, Mike.
You're asking about planning, why, why these plans are the way they are?
Sorry.
Um, so when you develop the plans, these plans are not developed based on us going in, or anybody being able to go in, and you look at every one of these specific areas. You start with a grid basis, so you say, every mile, we're looking at, uh, major arterials, and every half-mile, minor arterials. Which a minor arterial is a five-lane, seven-lane. So you draw the master thoroughfare plan, and that's all it is, is a plan, so that you have an idea about how often you need these types of sized roads, and that's, that's a general plan. If the council decided that, that you did wanna go with less roads, smaller roads, that's perfectly the council's choice and the community's choice. But the plan itself is like, from way up, you're saying, okay, I need to make sure that we're, we're looking for roadways that'll help transfer public. So some of the points that come to fruition there, say, look at University. Okay, University's a, would be, we would normally expect that to be a major arterial, seven lanes, all the way from one side of town to the other side of town, right? Uh, what did we run into? My, University a few years back, right? We didn't have enough right-of-way to really build the five-lane arterial through there, that segment from Andrews Highway to, uh, Grandview. So, when you're future planning, from, from a staff perspective, we're trying to make sure that we get enough right-of-way so that as the city grows, you're definitely gonna be able to build the roads you need. Another very good example is the loop, okay? One of the biggest things we have is trying to develop the loop, and, um, when we compete for monies from the state for the loop, one of the biggest issues that I've come up ever since I've been here, was you don't have the right-of-way to put the loop in as a freeway. We have a two-hundred-foot stretch of, of right-of-way, and they're looking for four-hundred feet in order to put in a freeway. Similar to Midlands Loop, the way it's being built, right? So you can have your frontage roads out there and your through lanes. And so, when we're looking at it, and, and I'm not trying to hold the one decision or the other, that's all perfectly whatever council wants to do. But what I'm trying to explain is why, when you ask, is that a five-lane road going that way? One of the things that I have a problem with is, is I always have a problem with the word never. You know, somebody might've said, you're never gonna need a five-lane road down University. Well, I think we ended up needing one, maybe. So, that's the, the type of thing that, that, um, when I'm looking at planning, I'm just trying to see if, if we're limiting ourselves or not. I don't know that there'll ever be a change on sixty-first going west. That wasn't analyzed in the planning, it was just that, that's a half-mile, uh, segment, and that would, that would be where you would have a minor arterial based on that concept, and that concept can change. It's not... So, I'm sorry, I don't know if you know.
No, no, you're good. Counselor, do we have any other questions on this?
Hey, Larry, let me ask you one question. Uh, I think I forgot to ask you the other day this. So sixty-first Street, would you, what would your preference be on that? Would you want it bigger or smaller? I know, it's, it's all a cost issue, I'm sure.
Well, anything over two lanes, the city pays their pro-rata share, so... Um, you could, I paid the two lanes and they pay the rest of it, so if you want five lanes, you're welcome to pay for it.
I understand.
Same thing with Dawn. I don't think you need sixty-first from Dawn west. Sixty-first goes into the county, doesn't lead anywhere. I'd eliminate that. Sixty-first Street going east? Going east?
Grandview.
I'm working on stuff east of Grandview at this point. It will be a major street.
Okay.
Going east.
So that'd be the reason to have a five-lane?
Going east.
You're going east.
So going west, you'll just shut it down?
I just kill, I mean, just stop it. I mean, there's no, there's nobody gonna be on that street unless you start working with the county and buying people out.
So you're a drill site on, on the west on that, uh, intersection?
Drill site, Larry.
I thought your, your drill sites went to the north.
Well, we're talking sixty-first Street, not Dawn.
Yeah, sixty-first is going east and west.
Yeah, right.
So right there on Dawn and sixty-first to the west, it would've gone to the west. Houses...
Just stop. Houses are gonna be, I wish you could get back to this other DM.
I thought there's a drill site that had to go to the east.
No, that is not a drill site. I think that's a drainage channel.
Drainage channel, okay.
Okay, if, if you'll see the Dawn and sixty-first Street, you see all the house lots, those are under construction.
Okay.
Everything west of Dawn is to be developed.
Okay.
Uh, we have drainage channels laid out for drainage. We have a major channel up there next to the, uh, the drill site. There is no place for, uh, a need for sixty-first Street. We can always get out on Dawn. We'll have three. We'll have everything laid out, and there will be smaller streets connecting everything. It'll be one continuous project if we eliminate sixty-first Street. And then you, you have the issue going north on Dawn, so...
So from Dawn to Grandview on sixty-first could be a three-lane?
Dawn to Grandview, yes, it's...
The, that sixty-first, that stretch of sixty-first Street?
I think it's a three or four-lane s- strip going from Dawn to Grandview at this point.
Yeah. I think it's five-lane.
I thought we were doing five, right?
Five-lane. But it could be three, 'cause there's...
It could, you do whatever, but that, I don't know how you're gonna do, I, I don't know how you choke down two lanes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't care for that.
We don't wanna do that. We wanna ma- maintain it as a five because of what we're gonna see to the east.
So to the west?
If you go to the east, but where are you going with the one going to the west? It's my, my...
Exactly. No, you're right, you're right. You're absolutely right.
So that kinda falls in too, it's... So Dawn, part of the, part of the thought on Dawn was that, and, and again, I'm not proposing one way or the other, please, but one of the thoughts on Dawn is it's, it's kind of a, a fairly, when I say direct, it's obviously not continuous completely, but from Hundredth Street down to, say, University. I understand it's smaller in the lower areas, but in the long term, it might not be, I don't know. But, so you would use Evans from one hundredth to eighty-seventh, and then from there, you would jump to Dawn, which is just to the east and then, and that would bring you on through this area and down. Whereas Grandview veers off, so it's not gonna get you all the way up to Hundredth Street and that type of thing. That's, so Dawn was seen as more of a roadway carrier that way, between neighborhoods.
Yeah, but in...
And then sixty-first, if it were going through, and if you ever planned for it to go west, you know, might be carrying traffic east and west.
Oh, I understand that, but the thing is, is in April of twenty-twenty, when, uh, they plotted Yukon, uh, Dawn going all the way and connecting to Utah, nobody knew about the five acres they're sitting out there that the buffer for the county airport, nobody knew.
We knew that they owned it for the last twenty-five years or thirty years. We did not know about the restrictions.
The restrictions.
The FAA or the county, and they're in the room today, so if you...
Well, I'm understanding that this has been going on, discussion's been going on in Free County for a while back. I asked you, uh, let me, let me ask you, Larry, honestly, when were you notified about this?
January, same time as Tom.
We, we found out in the summer.
Fifteenth or something?
Yeah.
We had a meeting on the...
Of this year?
Of this year.
Well, I was told that there was discussions January of, from, started last year.
No.
And then it started in the summer of last year.
Not that I've been aware of.
We weren't invited, if there was.
Okay.
The, the study apparently, I think, started back, the first phase of the study started?
Nothing to do with the study.
But as far as the RPZs and all that stuff, the study itself started over a year ago, the first phase, yes or no?
Real, real quick, can... Hold on, guys. Hold on. Time out, time out, time out.
We can't have these discussions.
We were having these discussions over here, and, and we're, you know, this is official meeting, so if, at least can you just identify so we can have it for the record, who you are?
Mark Mary.
Mark, Mark Mary, oh, so you're part of the board?
Yes.
Okay, okay. You're part of the county board, right?
The zoning board and part of the, uh, airport board.
Okay, okay. Okay, so that's, so there's a consultant with, with the county and the, and the airport board that basically said, hey, we need to be able to address these, uh, I guess, uh, restrictions, and I guess it's right-of-way?
So the county, uh, uh, the consultant, I think, came to us back in December. Al was the first one at the, but I'd say December of twenty-twenty-two, that's about the timeframe, I think, and, uh, there was a meeting, uh, that was held, and we had a, a team's meeting on it, and...
This is the city?
The, the consultant with the city, um, I don't remember if the county was present on that team's meeting or not. But with city staff, and we were being told by the consultant that they were looking at changing the, the size of the RPZ, that they were looking at making some...
For, for layman, what's the RPZ?
Uh, it's called a runway protection zone, and it restricts what you can do in that area, or...
I imagine so, it would.
And they were talking about potentially extending the runway perhaps one direction or another. I'm talking in general terms, because we didn't even go into a whole lot of detail.
Nobody, nobody's saying you're committing to county or anything.
But, um, so in saying that, they also, uh, we, we brought up, you know, they, they indicated that in these RPZs, that the FAA is not necessarily favorable for you to improve your roadways. And so when we were looking at that, of course, Yukon, we still expect it to grow to be a seven-lane road. It's in there, Dawn going north, which is this, we expect...
I can see that.
No five-lane. And then the segment going south, we're, of course, we're expecting it to be a new road, and their indication, they weren't giving us a firm deal, but they just said FAA typically will not approve of that, and so we became, uh, concerned to find out what we need. Uh, the next thing we did was in researching a little more in the RPZ, the portion of Ru- of Dawn that you see there south of Yukon, that right-of-way is owned by the city, okay? The, the county either, uh, sold it or, uh, donated it to the city at one point as right-of-way.
How much, how much width and length? How much right-of-way?
Uh, the right-of-way is appropriate for the, the, the width we're looking for here.
This little section, right?
No, I know what it is, but what's the, what's the dimensions? Eighty-foot wide?
And I think it's about three, three hundred feet, six hundred?
From this point to this point.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, from the pink area up to, uh, to Yukon. But in more recently, this happened, I don't know when, but more recently, when we researched that dedication, or the original deed to the county, 'cause the, uh, property owners there, the banks and the Houston Valley, had conveyed that property to the county, that triangle.
Okay.
That has the road in it, and when they conveyed it to the county, the deed specifically stated for, uh, airport purposes. Well, the, the roadway may not meet that, right, they conveyed the, uh, the right-of-way to us, or we took the right-of-way, but we may not have really gotten the right to build the road. So that's another question as to what would happen there. I don't know that the property owners that originally did the deed would have any problem in making that, that stipulation, but anyway.
Are the property owners still alive?
Oh, yeah. They're all alive.
They're all alive? That'd be a cumbersome process.
You're not gonna get it done.
You could get it done. Do you want to?
Do you want to?
No.
No.
No, I don't. Okay.
But that's, that's how that came up, and it all, it came to our attention back in December.
Oh, this in December?
There was a large meeting in January the fifteenth, the county, the airport board, all of the engineering, city manager, a couple of city, uh, councilmen were there. And, um, then we realized we couldn't build a road on it, unless you want to try some other avenue. So this is where Dawn's coming into play with everybody. We didn't know. Let me tell you, the, I've already spent a couple of hundred thousand dollars doing engineering on Dawn. The city's already spent fifty thousand on their part.
On our part.
Yeah, so it was a complete surprise to all of us.
Yeah, but there is a solution.
You, you wanna have, say something real quick?
Yeah, hold on.
So the easement that, uh, Tom was just talking about, I have the, I have it right here, um, and I've emailed this before, but it says clearly, speci- specific utility easement. That was for a water line only.
Oh, this was the, uh, the, uh, the, uh...
Yeah.
The, the, the property, the right-of-way that was, uh, a deal to the city? When did all that occur?
Uh, let's look at the date here.
As far as the dedication and all that?
Yeah, so, uh, seventeenth June nineteen eighty. And that, that's the... And that, that's the recorded date.
What, say that again. I, I read it, but for her, she.
The date.
June nineteen eighty.
Nineteen eighty.
Nineteen eighty.
She's trying to take notes and.
June seventeenth. I can tell you I was a freshman in high school at that time, so. Just wanted to be in a time perspective right there.
Right. And as far as the timeline, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, I ain't throwing you on the bus, but I have text messages here between Mark and I, Councilman Mata. He actually came to my office and we discussed this. This date is June fifteenth of twenty-two. My, my text, and I went to Mark because he's my councilman.
Okay.
Was the dawn extension from fifty second to Yukon approved? That, that's me. Mark's reply, we discussed it, but haven't taken any action on it. It should be on our agenda soon to vote on, but we have to find the funds for it. Looking for the money. My reply, y'all need to talk to text dot aviation. There's a great chance they would shut the project down because it's, it is directly under the, the takeoff and landing of the runway for Slaymar Airport.
Okay, so.
And that was, again, June fifteenth.
So what, what project would be shut down? The, uh, the extension?
It's just extension.
Yeah, yeah, I was saying, I was telling him, don't, don't waste your money on dawn. Yeah, I mean, I, I gave, I gave plenty of warning as soon as I knew about it.
Well, the thing is.
In June.
This thing was plotted in April of twenty, twenty twenty.
It was all, it was a done deal.
So this, 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 this was done before we got on council.
No, I get it. And I, and I, 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 I told you as soon as I knew.
No, I understand that.
Not January.
Understand that.
Okay.
Okay. So, all right, it, it, it's, it's, let's get back on track. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
We can be, we can be here till tomorrow.
Yeah, I just have one, I just have one coming. I spent a lot of time on this with Mr. Lee, and I, I don't think that the, the airport board itself has gone, Mr. Cornell was with me the other day. I don't think you've gone far enough and looked at all your options. Number one, I think that, uh, there can be, except, I'm being told from experts that there's ways to get around the FAA. Number one, that, that RPZ that you're seeing there can be moved to the other end of one six two nine. And the reason it's one six two nine, sixteen degrees southeast, which means it goes into the wind ten months of the year. You can't land at that end of the runway. You can only take off from that end of the runway. That's the difference in the dark. An RPZ, where this RPZ is here, you can't land going that way. You can only take off from that end.
I'm appalled. Can we take off that way all the time?
Well, I'm being told, the extent, the extension I'm talking about, the new extension. My, people that I'm talking to with text dot and, and, and that people are familiar with the FAA, so you have to be able to just take off from that end. My point is, is that that can be flipped to the other end. There's two thousand feet, as I understand it, from the end of the run, one six two nine, the other, at the other end, that could be used for that instead of going here, if we could just get some cooperation.
RPZ is the landing to follow.
Hold, hold on one moment. So let, let's, let's do this.
Yeah.
Um, the aviation board that's combined, city, county, you guys are meeting tomorrow, right? Okay, let's discuss that on that meeting.
Right, this is about.
Okay, now, Aaron?
Sir.
Give me your recommendations.
I like scenario three or the like as.
Go through them again.
Sure enough. Um, so this is. This is scenario one. That shows dawn going all the way through. What is the RPZ? What is potentially not likely?
Right, no.
There is an option two there that does put dawn moving north into an offset intersection. That becomes increasingly expensive for us and, uh, the developer.
Yes. That's option two.
Yes, sir. Then here is option three, which basically creates a, um, a collector of sorts, let's say a three lane collector, uh, of dawn that terminates at the north side of the, of the, of the.
Sixty first?
Uh, well, actually it terminates kind of on the north side of the neighborhood and, and, and does cross sixty first and goes down.
Larry, will you, will you just dent that in and put in, uh, barriers, or will you do a, a quarter sack? Where dawn is gonna, i- if, if.
Yeah, we won't have any kind of road going into there. We'll have it turning, do a T somewhere going to the west to the east.
Okay.
So I, one more question, Larry. Who owns that property to the west? Where sixty first originally was supposed to go down into the county. There's that.
To the west.
To the west, yeah.
Excuse me, to the west. I don't know. It's a couple of houses. It's individual houses.
To, okay. So I just, I can't tell from this, from this map just to clock. It's a blank piece of land, so.
It, it, there's a little bit of a sliver, but they own the land, but the house, four lanes will go right into the house.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So council, we have, we have some options here that we want to, uh, uh, give direction and what we wanna go to. Uh, Mr. Larry, Mr. Lee has indicated also to, uh, not go to the west on sixty first. Not go forward, uh, north in through the, uh, drill sites, and obviously we cannot go as it was proposed in April of twenty twenty. Keeping a five lane road from that intersection dawn and sixty first to the east at a five lane road. Now the semantic, now the, the, the issues about takeoff and landing on that north end, you, you, you guys need to work, work that out tomorrow when you guys get in there. And so if there's an option to be able to do that, I mean, I think li- literally the council in twenty, in April twenty twenty definitely wanted to go and connect dawn. But we also have an issue on Yukon and dawn going north.
Right.
And so, um, you know, this is just the first phase.
Yeah.
Uh, if there's, there's options, you know, Mr. Thompson, I'd like you, you know, go ahead and pursue those. Are we, do you wanna go try to go around the FAA? I'll tell you, I, I, I don't, I definitely don't have the, uh, the, uh.
Well, there are people that know how to go to, to get this stuff done. I mean, you go look at Love Field or some of those.
My portion stops at the bottom of the red line you're looking at.
Right.
It's a hundred percent for the city to go from the red line up to Yukon.
And that, and that's what I wanna be able to, to, to convey in this last portion, that, that extension solely and solely based on the city. That'd be R fighting, and let me tell you one thing is that, uh, what's the purpose of us doing that when we still have issues to resolve with the FAA, the county and the city in, in that intersection? Because for future development, we know that we need to straighten out dawn, but that's in that area. Also, there's been a lot of discussion, especially in our master plan, and we'll discuss this in going into our work, uh, workshops when we're gonna discuss, uh, Yukon. Because that's part of the, uh, quality of life committee that we're talking about, the expansion of Yukon. This is a portion that we have to address as well.
Exactly.
And so we're looking at options that way, but right now, I think for today and for, and for time, uh, I will say that I would go with this recommend- recommendation number three for, for right now. Depending on any more information coming through.
I do wanna say one thing, and that is if without a connector to the top, that means that it would be three point eight miles roughly to the top northwest corner of the, of the development for a fire truck to get there from what is the nearest fire station. You're looking at about three point eight. And if there was a connector through dawn, it would be one point eight. So this adds two miles to their trip. Is that safe to say, Chief Cotton? I, I did it on Google with a.
Eh, Aaron, we're.
Roughly.
Aaron, we're making trips all the way to thirty Knox, and this is not a problem.
I did, I didn't wanna be, I just wanted to throw everything out there.
My concern is when we go way out there past Knox, and so then we have to come right back. This is doable.
I'm open.
Look at option two, though, just, just for.
Yeah. I, 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 I went through, right. So with that connection now, this, this, as you can see my cursor surrounding this portion, that would put that dawn through, uh, Mr. Lee's, uh, commercial area, which then now by ordinance.
What would the cost be for that?
Well, he would be.
We have to incur that.
You'd have land cost plus road cost.
Yeah.
So, but by ordinance, because it's, but it would be servicing both sides of his street.
Yeah, I understand that, but we still gotta pay for it.
Understood. So that was basically a million dollars to run the five lane road all the way from that distance.
And that's the city paying for it?
Mm-hmm. That was the city's portion of it.
You'd probably be able to hold it within a million, but when the government gets in there, it's twice the cost.
It would be slightly less, less because we're not having to.
I would do the entire project. I always get reimbursed from the city for anything over two lanes, or the portion that you would be liable for, which is everything above the red.
Now, let me ask you this. If we wind up doing that offset like that. So let me ask you, what happens to the signal, signal light, uh, over there to the, to the, to the west? Is that still span?
You have two signal lights now.
You'd have to coordinate those signals.
Yeah, that's what I mean, because not, that's a short, that's a short span.
That doesn't include the cost for a new traffic intersection, traffic signal.
And let me tell you, man, come Friday night lies, when you guys are trying to get out of there during that, uh, OHS, uh, permitting game, they have to do those two stops.
So I recall it's about three hundred feet.
Yeah, that's close.
Yeah. I'm willing to, to do whatever for dawn and sixty first street, but delays cost money.
That's right. So let's do this then.
Hey, everything, let me say, everything, all those lots you see right there, or being already designed, they've already been sold. They're under contract. The, I've got time, the, I've got time constraints on all of those lots.
What's holding you up right now?
Well, I gotta know. Dawn, you think dawn's just getting rid of the road. Well, I've gotta move drainage and everything else from the west side to the east side if I don't have a five lane road. I've got a ditch at the top. I've gotta replace a drainage channel and a, and a holding pond to the north. I've gotta do a complete redesign again. So time is money. I just want to know which way to go.
Okay.
And again, my, my recommendation would be three, but to allow staff and the developer to work in conjunct. Give us a little bit of latitude for kind of the details on how it.
What's the latitude you're looking for?
Well, does, for instance, does dawn go all the way to the north as it's, as it's indicated here? Or do we shorten that up just short of the, the street below it to account for drainage, things like that? Just a, a little bit of latitude there to, uh, design with staff.
Okay, we do it in-house and not adding any more cost to it. Uh, I'd be, uh, open to look at both options, uh, two and three.
Mr. Lee, what is your preference? Three?
Cause number two's gonna take so much time, I prefer number three.
Three.
In, in the end, I don't see how you can do two without spending a lot more money.
And, and, and every day it gets more expensive.
Cause if you try to put dawn for the north part to connect into Yukon, if you'll see how it straightens out, that leaves me with a very terrible piece of property, which you could buy it and I don't care, but it, it's really, really weird shaped.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it is. Okay, guys, so constraint time, what are we looking for? Consensus on for staff to look at. I've made, I've made a recommendation of three and two with staff looking at two. It is an expensive process. It does delay time. It leaves a, an awkward, uh, uh, a piece of land to the left, uh, to the west, but there's two options. You connect into Yukon, which causes another problem with two signal lights within three hundred feet of each other, which you don't wanna do. Then you have that turn that going into Rat of Estates and then Ratness itself to the, to the east. Or do you leave it short for drainage? And if we're gonna do that, I, I don't see the purpose. We can do the drainage, uh, stopping it in, uh, recommendation three. So we have options, one, anything gonna happen. So we got two and three, two being expensive. Mr. Lee's still gonna incur cost in, on, on option three, cause he's indicated there's still a lot of, he has to move, but that's his preference.
Yeah.
So where would you wanna go?
Yeah, I'm, I just, I'm, I'm just, I've looked at this extensively with Larry. We spent a lot of time on this, and I, I just personally think that we kinda needed, he's been very generous to the city, and I think we need to, do what he thinks is best for him, cause I, I don't wanna slow him up and.
Well, I don't wanna cost, I don't wanna make him.
Make cost him a lot more money, and it's gonna, we've already wasted fifty thousand, so let's cut our losses and move on to it, and see if we still can't work around this, this airport issue, because Yukon is gonna be a problem with the airport eventually.
Okay.
So, you know, you, you talking about moving dawn on option two, you're talking about new set of plans, city funding.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to look at it.
Oh, yeah.
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 Exactly.
So, okay, so we got three, three. Anybody else?
Three.
Three.
Okay. We'll go with the consensus. We'll go three. Anything else we wanna add on this? We beat this.
No, sir, thank you, though. Thank you, council. Thank you, city manager.
Well, good luck on the meeting tomorrow. Yeah, it is. It's a lot of moving parts. Okay, item, uh, nine. Item nine, discuss economic development agreement between Odessa Development Corporation and Taylor Sutton Services. This item will approve a five year economic, oh, wait a minute. Hold on, hold on, sir.
Sorry.
No, no, you, you guys are good. I did have people. Mr. Stringer, Mr. Stringer, you have anything else you wanna add on this item?
No, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Is Caleb York still in here? Caleb, did you wanna talk, you didn't put what item you wanna speak on. You didn't wanna speak on this item?
No.
Okay. Okay, so we can move on. Item nine. Discuss economic development between ODC and, uh, Taylor Sutton Services. This item was approved for five year economic development incentive agreement in the amount of eight hundred and sixty two thousand five seventy-nine by Taylor Sutton Services. Mr. Grove?
Honorable mayor, distinguished council, thank you so much. Uh, come before today representing the Odessa Development Corporation and an economic development agreement between the ODC and Taylor Sutton Services. Just to give you a little bit of a summary, I know it's already in your packet, but for the record, Taylor Holdings and Taylor Services is a family owned manufacturer of heavy duty forklifts, container handlers and lift trucks. The company was actually founded nineteen twenty-seven and has several divisions nationwide. The Odessa location is planning to expand their current facility and, uh, also add additional jobs. At this time, the company plans to add an eighteen thousand square foot, eighteen bay maintenance facility, forty-five hundred square feet of additional office space, a twelve hundred square foot, uh, paint booth and an eight, a hundred square foot rebuild shop in addition to miscellaneous equipment. The total capital investment will be approximately two point four million dollars. Uh, it'll also, that, uh, in addition to the, to going to help towards the capital investment, they're also planning to use part of the grant money for eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of a new water line for fire protection. The company currently employs thirty-one full-time W two employees in Odessa, and this project would also create an additional twenty-four full-time equivalent jobs, which will translate over the five year term of the contract to about nineteen million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars in additional payroll, uh, for our residents. Uh, based on the amount of the investment and the number of jobs and payroll, during the term of the agreement, the company qualifies for a total grant from the ODC in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars to be paid out over five years. On February eighth ninth, the Odessa Development Corporation Board of Directors voted unanimously to approve this agreement, and our recommendation is that, uh, city council approve the grant, again, in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, with the first payment to happen, of course, after, uh, construction and, uh, complete fulfillment of the agreement.
And that'd be year one?
Yes, sir.
Council, any questions? Payment would be eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, five, five seventy-nine?
Over five years. So you're actually looking in year one, it would be a hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars approximately, and then one fifth, yes, each year.
Chris, how long have you been working with Taylor Sutton Services?
We've been working with them for almost two years now, isn't it?
I sort of say, they originally approved it in, uh, December of last year.
Yes, sir.
I like that item three, reports and monitoring. Item three, companies shall submit following documentation to demonstrate the compliance with investment requirements set on section two point three. Invoices, cancelled checks, but, uh, cancelled checks indicating vendor payments, extra counter appraisal district, graduations, applicable contracts and similar forms of documentation showing the least and minimum amount of investment required by the agreement. This is something new.
Um, it's actually normal. That's in most all the normal agreements. They have to show where they have, when you've got a grant that's based on capital investment, they have to show that they have fulfilled the terms of the contract and actually built the two point four million dollars.
Good. Now we just need to put teeth to it and make sure that that does happen.
Do you have a clawback provision in there?
Um, I believe there is a standard clawback. I've got the contract. Is that right, Dan? Yes, sir.
I think some of the other ones haven't had that.
Good question.
Quick, council questions? Direction? Criticisms?
In addition, we're also looking at, at future contracts that are gonna be heavily weighted for capital investment to hopefully kind of put a little meat in, uh, protecting our, um, Ector County Appraisal District from, uh, future discussions in, in values of property. Uh, it's our feeling that if the, if we're gonna go in and do a grant based on a large capital investment, um, that, that the company basically put that capital investment on the tax rolls, at least for the. um, that, that the company basically put that capital investment on the tax rolls, at least for the duration of the grant. Um, in a lot of cases, what we'll see is they'll get tax abatements or grants, uh, based on a capital investment of a large magnitude, but then, once they get it built, at the end of the next year, they go in and say, oh, no, 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 that equipment, that land is only worth a fraction of, of that amount. So they're, they're paying taxes on a much, much, much lower, uh, amount.
They're showing the appraisal district for devaluation, or overvaluation.
Correct, and so if the appraisal district now comes in and says, oh, no, it's worth way, way less than, than it is, we just don't wanna see the companies come in and say, hey, we want a grant based on this large capital investment, but then, a year later come in and say, oh, no, 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 it's not worth near that much and.
We can do that contractually when we're doing this.
We're looking at that now, yes, sir.
Counsel, moving forward?
Move forward.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to the, uh, hidden, the hen ordinance. Item ten, discussing maybe the animal control code ordinance to allow for backyard hens, allowing backyard hens inside the city limits will be discussed.
Mayor, mayor, council, this is the, this will change the laying hen ordinance, which actually changed, uh, the animal control ordinance, chapter two. Uh, just a summary of it, the proposed ordinance, uh, lays out the definition of a laying hen, a backyard hen, how many are allowed, which will be four hens, um, the size, design of the coops, which are approximately ten inches or so. And the hens will be able to roam during the day if they're monitored by their adult owners. Uh, the yard must be enclosed with eight-foot fences. And, of course, there's also a punishment for the violation of the ordinance, and the coops have to be within, uh, at least fifty feet from property lines, is what we have. And, of course, permits will be required on the hens, and the hen's wings must be clipped by veterinarian. That's pretty much overview of it, the ten thousand foot overview.
Okay. We do have people that wanna speak about our, I didn't see this note, uh, somebody wanted to speak but needed to do so before four P M. because they needed to go pick up.
She's here.
Is she here?
I can back.
She's back.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see this note, so you know what, we're gonna bring it right up, right up top. I'm sorry about.
That's all right.
But. You know, we put time limits on people wanting to speak on item, but we don't, we don't, those are on the agenda, so.
All right, thank you, mayor, council.
Now, you're, uh, just, yeah, give us, just, just your, uh, your first and last name.
Yeah, my name is, uh, Dr. Geneva Peterson, and I am in favor of backyard chickens.
Okay.
Uh, and I wanted to talk to you today about exactly what the ordinance would say, because I was looking at the Midland ordinance for backyard chickens. And the Midland ordinance says that the chickens have to be kept within fifty feet of any residence. So, that would include my residence. And I have here with me the survey of my property, which is a home between JBS and Tanglewood, not too far off from Hobby Lobby, um.
You, do you not have the setback?
Excuse me?
You don't have the setback of fifty foot?
No, and so if I look at it, and I can hand this over to you, this is a key of fifty feet, and this is my property, there's no place to keep chickens fifty feet from my own property. And I've got one of the larger lots in Odessa for a residence. It's like, almost a quarter of an acre. And so, I just wanted to raise this issue with you all and say, as, as you draft the ordinance, if it goes forward, if we can just amend the language a little bit so that it will say fifty feet from any residence, with the exception of the owner of the chickens' residence.
I hear you.
And that's, that's a small change, but it would be the difference between most Odessa residents having backyard chickens legally or not.
I think the premise of why Midland put that in is to restrict it even more so.
Yes, yes, and, and I, I think that it's kind of disingenuous to put ordinances in that ostensibly allow your citizens to do things, but if you look at the fine letter of the law, you essentially restrict everybody except maybe the most affluent citizens from doing that thing.
I understand, okay.
So, um, I'm not sure if there's a place I can leave my contact information, but if there's, I'd be very happy to work with city attorneys to develop language that, uh, makes a functional ordinance for the people of Odessa.
Yes, if you just give your, uh, contact information to city secretary, we'll be able to invite you when, uh, Dan is late at night putting this thing together.
All right, perfect, that's, that's fine, they can go to bed, and I'll come back.
Doctor, I think we'll also, those two ladies in red, they're dressed for Valentine's today, so please leave your name on for them to be contacted.
Doctor, thank you very much. Mr. Cleaver?
Good afternoon, mayor, city council, city manager, city attorney, and city secretary. Uh, name is Bill Cleaver. And got a couple of things, I was texting back and forth with Mr. Mata, Councilman Mata, on a couple of things. And one of them was cleared up, I asked him, basically, you can also have four chickens, and also, according to the present law, a combination of four, I mean, two dogs or four dogs or whatever, you know, combination of dogs and cats to get up to four. So, four other animals plus four chickens. Midland ordinance, I agree, says fifty foot from, I think yours says fifty foot from the property line. I think Midland say fifty foot from their residency, and also they mentioned fifty foot from a water well. I just happen to have two water wells, so I would definitely like for that to be added, uh, amended or whatever. Most folks don't have water wells. I am on a little bit larger lot, I'm on probably half an acre, so I can meet that. If I wanted chickens, I could meet that requirement. I had chickens when I was a kid. They were great pets, until we learned that Sunday, that chicken that you call your pet was gonna be your chicken dinner. That's where we had some problems with chickens. My other deal, uh, uh, kinda back and forth with Mark was, how are we gonna really enforce this? How are we gonna make people go through and get permits, get their wings clipped? Uh, make sure they in chicken coops, you got to have them in chicken coops. You know, I worked with a guy had three hundred and forty-five thousand chickens that he raised, and he sold them to one of the, you know, major chicken outlets. And it was a full-time job, cause he had a crew of people to do that. So, how, how do we actually maintain that this gonna happen? And how do we make sure that someone don't slip in a rooster so we can get more chickens, you know? I mean, it's, it's, it's a good deal, I understand the price of eggs, and I'm almost off eggs at this point, but they're, they're presents a lot of problems. In my backyard, uh, price a year, we have a hawk back there, and this would probably make him a chicken hawk if he could get hold of the chickens, you know? So, just a couple of things, how do we enforce it? Uh, the water wells, the fifty-foot deal, I, I understand exactly what she's saying, but this has to be pretty tight, chickens, chickens can be pretty, 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 pretty nasty if we're not careful. Feeding them, feeding them table scraps is probably not the way you wanna go, of course, chicken feed is pretty expensive also. So, that, those are my concern. And, and you notice I post no chickens, uh, no hens, uh, no, hell, no, no roosters.
Just said, just hens.
Just hens, yeah.
Okay, uh, Freda Daniels.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members. I would, my name's Freda Daniels, and I am in favor of backyard chickens. Now, I don't feel that they should run loose all the time, and they should, there should be a coop. Um, and to those guys in blue back there, just cover up your ears. When I purchased my house in two thousand and sixteen, a new house, north of town, just on the right of Andrews Highway, in the contract, it says, I could have up to four hens and one goat. Now, I pay city taxes, so I am in city. Um, my chickens are very well-kept. No one, one knows that I have chickens. Um, only the neighbors, when I started sharing my extra ch, eggs with them. They don't smell, there's more of a smell produced by my dogs than from the chickens. And from the chicken coops, when I clean them, I pour them in my flower beds, which is the whole length of the back of my yard coming down the sides. I have flowers, I have beautiful flowers. I have trees, and then I also plant vegetables. I have the prettiest flowers in the backyard that you wouldn't even think you would see in Odessa, Texas, from this fertilizer that is a natural fertilizer that comes from these hens. Now, I couldn't have roosters, they, the, that was on the contract, no roosters, just hens, and I am agreeable with this, with the price of eggs as they are right now. I've not had to buy eggs. Um, and I've been able to give to others, and they're more nutritious and fresher than what you're gonna buy at the store. And also, uh, the, uh, if you could look into the amendment on clipping the chickens' wings, not all chickens can fly. So not all chickens need their wings cut.
W K R P. That's got in my witness that turkeys could fly.
So, um, the chickens that I have cannot fly. And there's no need to cut. Correct, there's no need to clip their wings. And I thank you for hearing me, thank you very much.
Uh, Caleb York?
Afternoon.
Have to state your name for the record, please.
Caleb York, this is my first time doing a city council thing, and it's real nice to see how the sausage is made. Very exciting stuff here, but, uh, I haven't really looked too deeply at the ordinances, amendments, all that stuff. I'm strictly here to push the approval for backyard chickens. Obviously, clip, um, basically what, what this young lady said, I, uh, agree with her on the, uh, you don't need to clip the wings, uh, especially on the breeds, but chickens tend to wanna stay where they're being fed. You know, they, they don't really wanna fly off, there's always occasionally your, um, rebels and stuff like that. So I, I do disagree with that humbly. Uh, about a hundred years ago, the federal government actually told the truth, believe it or not. Said Uncle Sam expects you to keep hens and raise chickens, this was on nineteen eighteen, uh, after World War One, uh, because things were so crazy and, and, you know, it literally says, the smallest backyard has room for a flock large enough to supply the house with eggs. The cost of maintaining such a flock is small. Table and kitchen waste is, is good for the hens, this is true. Um, I, I disagree with, with him, you can totally give them, uh, your table scraps and whatnot, and they love it. You can also use their compost, or their, uh, waste as compost, it's, it is such a good fertilizer, there's, obviously, that's pretty common knowledge. You know, there's a lot of things like, I've, I've saw on social media a lot of complaints like, what about the noise? As opposed to what? I live next to Forty Second with the most loudest exhaust, with the most banging, moronic bass music. Not a, not a peep. But a chicken, a cluck, really? Okay. And y'all gave me this mic and podium, so now I'm on a high.
You got three minutes, brother.
Y'all, y'all done did this to me.
Use up your three minutes.
Um, but anyhow, I'm here to push it, obviously, uh, looking at the amendments, if we could just make it common sense, if we can make it to where it can actually be practiced by the normal citizenry, maybe, you know, then I, I, I do trust y'all with that, um, and, and also the people there and the talk behind me. But I thank you for your time.
Fair enough, thank you. Mr. Rodriguez? I couldn't read the, I couldn't read the writing, so I didn't wanna kill, butcher the first name, so just a first name and last name for the record, please.
Counsel, thank you for having me, my name's Lucia Rodriguez. First, I'd like to commend y'all, it's my first time at a city council meeting, and y'all do good work, this is, I, like he said, how the sausage is made.
You a little bit louder, so you can come in and listen to it.
Yeah. But I, no, I, I do commend y'all, y'all are doing a good job, and everything you're doing is important, I don't think people, uh, respect that enough.
We appreciate it, thank you.
It's a good thing, although I do think that there are limits to what a government should be telling their people what they can and cannot do, especially in the privacy of your own backyard. I understand limits and considerations to your neighbors, but that should usually be left to neighbors within themselves. As you were speaking earlier about streets and whatnot, uh, communities should have an understanding, now, you're always gonna get an honorary neighbor here and there. But, uh, the neighborhood I grew up in, or I'm in right now is built in the forties, and, uh, unfortunately, a lot of my original neighbors have passed on or, or retired and left. But I actually got the chance to live next to the original homeowners of those homes, and every last one of them had chickens when they were growing up, and even s, some of my neighbors, they still had chickens. And I didn't, I mean, I, I've never been an animal person or anything like that, so I was like, oh, that's great. I didn't know there was an ordinance against them. But, uh, nevertheless, my wife told me about this, and she's like, you know, you're into politics, you ought to go talk about it, and I said, I'm into politics in my living room, that's about as far as it gets. But I, I honestly don't think there should be any ordinance against the keeping of the chickens, other than that they be well-maintained, and that they be, um, restricted to limit according to the backyard. Now, everyone that has a dog keeps them as they see fit, some people like their dogs in the backyard, some people like their dogs on the couch. You know, I'm a, I'm an outside guy, keep the dogs outside, I got Malamutes. And like he was saying, if my, if my Malamutes even hear an ambulance go off, it doesn't matter what time of day it is, they're gonna howl loud enough that you can hear them for a mile around. It's just.
It's in their nature.
Exactly, and rooster, hen, I, we should leave that to the citizenry, it's their backyard, it's their children. They're gonna, no mother is gonna put their children at risk on purpose, just so they can have fresh eggs. It's also taking away from the American experience to be putting unwarranted restrictions. I'm all right with an ordinance saying, hey, if you're gonna have chickens, keep them up, you know, maintain them, if we start getting calls from your neighbors that they're living in horrible conditions, and you got a hundred chickens and one tractor-supplied chicken coop, I understand that.
Three minutes, all right.
Thank you very much.
Anyways, that's, that's my two cents.
Appreciate you, appreciate you for your comments. Uh, Tim Harry? You got two minutes. I'm perfect, even better.
Do what?
You have to sound like a rooster.
Don't encourage them.
I've, I've been, I've been accused of sounding like something that's a little more like a donkey, but that's okay. Tim Harry, so anyway, I just wanted to speak in support of the ordinance, I think that it's a good idea. Um, I think that, uh, I, I, I don't, I don't really like restrictions on my property, I lived in the county. At one point in time, we had twenty-four chickens on our property. Uh, we, uh, we loved our chicken coop, um, we, we don't have a chicken coop anymore, obviously, cause we moved in the city limits, but, uh, they were a great source of eggs, um, they were a great source of protein. My kids don't like store-bought eggs for a reason, uh, we don't really eat a whole lot of eggs anymore, cause we don't have the farm-fresh eggs. Uh, but, uh, they were great, the best garbage disposal you have ever seen in your entire life. We'll put Incinerator out of business in two seconds. Uh, they will absolutely eat anything, uh, take a, take a big load off your landfill, that kinda thing. Uh, but, uh, speaking in support of this, but I wanted to go one step further with this, and, uh, one of my buddies brought this up to me, and he has a really good point. We got a fee associated with this, um, technically a fee's a tax. Uh, you're taxing a food source. So, we need to be real mindful about taxing the food source, uh, and looking at that. Um, I don't think Midland's ordinance taxes it or fees it. I understand needing to hire some additional animal enforcement people, uh, as it is, but, um, you know, that's, uh, that's kinda tough. And clipping wings, we had twenty-four of them, they roamed the property. They didn't fly off the property, they didn't really leave the property. Uh, we had four-foot fences, and they really stayed behind it without too much of a problem. Uh, so I don't really think, uh, a need for going to go see a veterinarian for getting them, getting them clipped, I, I think that's a little excessive. I think the fee may be a little bit, a little bit high too, so I just kinda wanted to put that out there, would really like to see that dropped, but other than that, I think it's a great idea, thanks.
Okay, cheap, real quick, this is why I was asking to stay real quick, I just wanna ask you a quick question. We'll be done real fast.
Okay.
So, real quick for the record.
Sure.
Yes, the city of Odessa did have an ordinance. It did not create an ordinance to outlaw fowl, uh, hens and roosters. Uh, it amended it, and at that time, the reason why they amended it, it was a, uh, it was recommended by the O P D. at that time, because we were having cockfighting inside the city, and it was prevalent. This is the culture in Odessa, and so we had to, uh, we were drug dealing and gambling. There was one right there on Twenty-Fifth and Hancock. It was pretty big. I, I know this because I was on the council at that time. This is why this existed. The reason why I put this back on, because for the last twenty-four months, I've been hearing about a hens ordinance, and I've asked, everybody that have asked me to propose one, no one did. So I finally just said, fine. I asked, uh, the city attorney to recommend Midlands. I kept hearing, Midlands always ahead of, of Odessa. Well, there was a reason why we did what we did. Now, here's a question I have for the chief, and I think that everybody would agree. We don't want to have to permit this, but the thing is, we have to enforce it. Right now, how many officers in code, uh, in the, in the animal control to go out there with what we're doing right now? How many positions do we have budgeted? How many do we have currently? Two. So would it be a strain? Yes. Will everybody in the city, I mean, we have dog, we have dogs, feral cats, what are, what are issues right now with animals outside of fowl?
No, absolutely. You, you do have, uh, dogs that run loose. You do have feral cats that, that run loose. Um, we basically answer those calls that are in progress, those that need to be handled right now.
Are we having issues from the county coming in with those animals?
Um, as far as taking them to the shelter.
Dropping them off, things of that nature?
I, I think that would, that goes back and forth, absolutely. Why? Because the shel, new shelter's not open. The, uh, the, the current shelter has limited intake. Uh, we, we don't have intake from the county right now. Um, as soon as the new shelter opens, that will, again...
Late last year, I got a call from the former mayor of, uh, Big, uh, Big Spring that they had packs of dogs running around, that we had any space that we could store, there is here. Now, I, absolutely not. Even if we did have space, he was not going to get the space. This is an issue that I, I understand that everybody's talking about the cost of, of, of eggs, but they also have a high cost to feed and a high cost of building the, the, the coop and things of that nature. And so, uh, we're, I'm, I'm going to wrap up. And, 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 and you, this is why I'm saying this, is that there are valid arguments on both sides. Today's process was to gather information. I don't want to press on the council to make a decision today. Take this information, keep having discussions, and in a future council, here pretty soon, we'll make a decision. But I think the, the, there are valid points, uh, you know, not everybody will take care of them. Like, there's a video going on in, in, in Eighty-seventh Street or something like that, and I know the guy. He's got a video of a roaming chicken in that, in the, a rooster. I was on a roof doing an inspection, and guess what was next door? A rooster and a hen. And not only were they, they were trained, they were trained, because they saw me, and I, and I contemplated about reporting it, and they slowly walked on the other side of the house, and they never came back. They were trained. But this is already occurring in city of Odessa. Will it be a strain on our services? Yes. Will be, will there be bad, uh, actors? Yes. Will there be complaints? Yes. Will be a source of food for the wildlife out here? Yes. But I also understand that what we've gone through COVID and inflation, that people want to see this because they want to be uniform with the community. So that's what you're tasked for, and you're very welcome for, for me putting on this. But I think that you need to just gather more information, talk to the chief, see what their constraints are happening through the, uh, the animal control, because they're the ones that are going to be tasked with, you know, getting the phone calls, receiving the phone calls. And will somebody get a rooster? Guys, they're already out there. You know, you, you had one right next door to yours, yeah.
I didn't have one. My neighbor had one.
Sorry about that. Let's get that clear. Yeah, you had a name. That's all I wanted to ask. I thought I kept it.
I think from our standpoint, our, our biggest issue is not noise, because I think barking, barking dogs are louder than, than the chickens are going to be. I don't think that's an issue. Um, uh, I, I think the issue is with, with the same that you have with cats and dogs, the great owners will be great owners, and the poor owners will be poor owners, and, and it's, it's going to be the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, my biggest issue is, again, what happens when I come, when we come across a poor owner, and we have to seize those, those animals, and we don't have the facilities, so we'll have to create facilities, and that's...
That's a good point. I hadn't even thought about that. That's a good point. That's a good point.
I, other than that, I mean, it's really...
Well, that's true. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, guys, thank you for the information. We're going to move.
Yeah. Hey, Mayor, just for, just for the record, you know, you already made the comment, but the bureaucracy that would be created by having chickens in the backyard, we can't afford. And so we have to have income to be able to do that, and you couldn't hire enough enforcement officers to go measure fifty feet at every house and every bay that gets a permit. It's just logistically impossible. And for everybody's information, just so you know, the last thirty days, a dozen of large grade-A chickens have, eggs have gone down from five sixty-three to two sixty-one. That's a fifty-seven percent decrease in the price of eggs. This is a knee-jerk reaction to a short-term problem.
That's the other side of the word. Yes, one last comment.
It is not a knee-jerk reaction. I have wanted chickens since I moved to Odessa five years ago. All right, it's not about the price of eggs. It's about wanting good quality eggs that I've raised myself. It's about an animal husbandry experience with my sons. It's about a lifetime.
Okay. I'll take all that into consideration, and we'll come back, and when everybody's ready, we'll put it back on the agenda. Okay, so you'll be hearing more about hens here in the next couple of days. We're going to move on to item eleven, discussing consider annual review code of conduct. Council, review the code of conduct as required by ordinance number twenty nineteen fifty-five. I, in the consensus of yes.
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 Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you, it's just the, an housekeeping item, ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash fifty-five, that was approved back in, on November, in twen, not twenty nineteen. Provides for the city council to review this annually for the code of conduct. If you have any, uh, changes, you're welcome to bring that up. And basically, that, last year, council reviewed it at the June, in June, but with the, I wanted to bring it back after the election with you, Council, so this point forward, it would be, um, in January or February, that council will review.
Fair enough. Give everybody a chance to review, and then they pull out the documents, get it back to you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Seeing that there is no more business before the city council, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mata, second by Councilmember Warner. All in favor, indicating by saying aye. All opposed, indicating by saying nay. Most passing, and answers. We are adjourned. We'll see you here in forty-five minutes.